Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Seaver.
Here.
Vice Chair Spahl.
Here.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Brezja.
Here.
Ms. Miles.
Here.
Ms. Brown, present. Dr. Jones.
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a forum.
Thank you. Dr. Newman, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No, ma'am.
Great. Can I get a motion to approve the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Brezja, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. All right. Moving on to board committee reports, I would like to hear from the...
Board Development Committee first.
Yes, the Board Development Committee met on June 25th where we further refined our protocols, including the remedies section. The committee prepared... See, this is... I'm getting really loud again. The committee prepared two options for remedies for the group to consider on July 14th.
Thank you. And our Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee met on the 3rd to discuss VSBA policy updates, committee discussion and specific policies and legislative priorities. We'll be discussing those further on the discussion agenda.
Very good. And next, we have citizens' comments. Is there anyone here that would wish to address the board? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to consent agenda. We have a motion.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Brezja, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. The consent agenda is approved. All right. Tonight on the discussion agenda, first up, we have policies, and I'll go back to Mrs. Stevens.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We had a Policy Committee meeting on the 3rd of July, and it was 100 and some odd pages of policy updates. This go around several policies, VSBA model policies had significant updates, and there are also several new VSBA policies. I'm going to try to get through the new ones and the ones that had major updates. Those ones, I am going to email to Ms. Garza to put on the action agenda as opposed to the consent agenda, so that we have additional opportunity to discuss them. So the policy updates from VSBA, the first one was EB, which is a copy of School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan. The VSBA added additional language and now includes an Athletic Emergency Action Plan, Bleeding Control Program, and Cardiac Arrest Plan. In addition, the Division, MCPS, is modifying the policy to designate the Supervisor of Security Services as the Emergency Manager and has added language to allow principals to designate additional staff to add to the emergency response teams. The next policy is EBB, and it is an additional explanation of how, when, and what to include in communication with parents or guardians in the event a threat assessment is completed and a student is determined to be a threat. Then, policy EBBA was a modified policy for us. We modified it back in 2024, but the changes that were made at the VSBA level have now allowed... will now allow us to adopt it as a no longer modified policy, but as the VSBA's policy. This one is about a copy of Emergency First Aid CPR and AED certified personnel. And... Sorry, I got... lost my track on my paper. Then we have EBBC. We already... this is opioid antagonists, and what this talks about is that school employees have a right to administer an opioid antagonist if they feel that someone is suffering from an overdose. We have already addressed this as a regulation, so a policy is not needed at this time to address it. Then we have policy EBCB, which adds sudden cardiac arrest drills and requires that a bleeding control kit be present when emergency drills are conducted. The next one that has significant or substantial changes is GBEB. It adds languages to say that weapons are prohibited at any school-sponsored events. That was not originally in the language. The next one we get to, and this is one which I believe we're going to discuss a little bit further, probably when we have it on the action agenda, if not earlier, I would like to hear input on this one. GCDA-M, the M signifies that it's modified. Virginia legislation now allows felons who've had their rights restored to be employed by public schools. Certainly those... only those that were not considered barrier crimes. Our current policy is modified as we do not have hire individuals with felonies. The Division reached out to our legal counsel to ask if we are now required to hire qualified employees with previous convictions for non-barrier crimes. The model policy says that we may employ them. We need to discuss whether we would like to keep the language that says we may employ individuals who have committed felonies but have had their rights restored, or whether we want to keep the language as it is today. Then we have GCE-M. Like I said, there's a whole lot of these. This one is a copy of Substitute Teachers. Our policy is modified because we require substitutes to be 21 years old, not 18. Then we have GCL. Sorry, I've got them marked and I'm turning them over as I go through them. GCL is a copy of Professional Staff Development. The new policy adds language concerning professional development, specific training on working with students with autism spectrum disorder. Our Special Education Department, Mr. Macy, is currently working on that training. However, the training is optional. It's not required at this time. In addition, the new model policy spells out the total number of hours and total frequency and duration of required non-academic training cannot exceed 25 hours every five years. So any required training that doesn't relate to academics, you can only have up to 25 hours over a five-year span. However, if it's optional training that you as the employee choose to engage in, that doesn't count towards the 25 hours every five years. The next one we have, like I said, there's a lot, is GCPD, Copy of Professional Staff Discipline. This one, language was added to explain that employees will not be subject to disciplinary action made in connection with the administration of an opioid antagonist, provided it was administered in good faith. That was not originally in the policy. Then we have policy IGAG, which requires now for us to provide instruction on opioid overdose prevention and reversal in secondary schools. And spells out a little bit of what that should look like. Then we have policy IGBA. For students with disabilities, the IEP is required to include language to address accommodations and supports that the student may need during an emergency. If it is the student's initial IEP, the team is required to discuss whether the student's needs, accommodations, or supports in emergency situations. It also requires that the IEP team, when a student is set to enter 11th or 12th grade, the IEP team needs to inform the student and their family on the rights and obligations relating to dual enrollment courses. Then we have IGBJ. This is a new policy. This policy is called... Let me get there. Advanced or Accelerated Mathematics. This is a new policy. Schools are now required to automatically enroll students in grades 5 through 8 in accelerated math classes when their SOL math scores are in the upper 25th percentile statewide. Guardians must now opt out their children if they do not want their children to participate in accelerated math classes. Then we have JFCCM. Let me get to it. JFCCM is Student Cell Phone and Smart Device Possession and Use. This is the VSBA's version of the policy we adopted earlier, back at the start of 2025. VSBA's model is going to... if we adopt the VSBA model policy, that will move our current policy into a regulation. Correct, Dr. Newman? Thank you. And then we have KGB. This is a new policy and directs the Division to notify... Ah, the new policy directs the Division on notification of school-connected overdoses. How quickly parents and family members need to be notified, and it only requires it if it is a suspected overdose. In addition, if any accuracies were made in the initial notification or subsequently discovered, the principal or principal's designation provides an updated notification to the parent of each student in the relevant school to correct any such inaccuracies. Then we have KBA. This was a model... this was a modified policy that we had. Copy of Requests for Public Records. This was a modified policy, but the new VSBA policy is now in line with ours. Copies of Requests for Records. Then we have Policy DJF. Virginia now allows convicted felons whose rights have been restored to be awarded contracts for the provision of services, and this is another one that I think the board needs to further discuss. Then we have... Check, check, check. Policy JEC-R. This is a VSBA regulation that is recommended we do not adopt. Our regulation covers this and more. This is on school admission. Then we have Policy JO. JO is Copy of Student Records. This allows for the redaction of a foster parent... The updated language allows for the redaction of a foster parent's address prior to providing any records to the student's biological parents or non-custodial parents. Then we have Policy JRCA. It now includes language to spell out how and when a school division can or cannot access information from a student's school-issued device. Then we have KQ. KQ talks about commercial... Copy of Commercial Promotional Corporate Sponsorship and Partnerships. The language now added says that sponsors and partners are required to establish that their employees having direct contact with students are legally allowed to do so. Then, last but not least, we have Policy LC, which is for charter schools. The language was updated to spell out specifics on charter schools and the Division's requirements. In addition, there were a few policies that were not part of the VSBA bundle that we as a committee chose to discuss. The first one was FB. FB was a policy concerning renovation and construction at our schools, at our various schools, and the model policy said that the superintendent may seek input from the community. We discussed whether or not we needed the word "may" in there, or whether or not we needed the policy at all. The committee determined that we recommend that we keep the policy and we do not remove the term "may." The next two policies, JFC and JFCC, are both related to Student Code of Conduct. The VSBA is currently changing verbiage from Student Code of Conduct to Standards of Student Conduct. We looked into it, and this is not a required change. It's simply language that the VSBA is updating. The Division is not required to change the language, however, the language in the policies. However, a quick check of all of our other policies indicated that only one policy, JFCE, would need to be modified. An exhaustive search has not yet been completed. The question of the language being changed can be further addressed by the academic committee, because the biggest document that would need to be changed on is the Physical Student Code of Conduct. So that we will leave up to the academic committee. Then we had another policy, BCA, School Board Organizational Meetings. And I would like to share the updates that we came up with. I just have to pull it out. This will be... BCA is a copy of School Board Organizational Meetings. We are looking to modify it to be BCA-M. And what we would be adding to the policy is that the terms of the chair clerk, vice chair, and deputy clerk are one year, with the chair serving no more than two years out of a four-year term. The vice chair position will rotate through the seven elected board members until either each member has had the opportunity to serve one year, or all the members who wish to serve have already had a chance to do so. That's our recommended update for BCA, which would turn it into BCA-M. And finally, under Policies, there were questions and concern brought up by various employees as to how administrators in different buildings communicate with staff in regard to leave being taken. The actual policy itself, which is GCBD, allows... only contains verbiage that allows the superintendent to create regulations concerning leave. The regulation in question was GCBD-R. In our committee meeting, we spoke with Ms. Fisher, and she's agreed to look over that regulation to determine if any verbiage needs to be changed or updated, and if instruction to administrators concerning conversations with staff about leave needs to be updated. That's everything for Policies. We next go into legislative priorities. Anybody have any questions on just Policies right now? Yes?
All right. Thank you for that exhaustive list. I am thankful for you putting these on the action agenda. The kind of the history of this for people who don't realize is that the Division red line was not added until yesterday, late morning, afternoon, something like that. So, and it was 115 pages, so it wasn't really a lot of time. It was... I know, I did not see that document until after I had finished reading a different one. So, you know, so that's part of the reason why this is going on to action instead of consent agenda, because by the virtue of having the meeting on July 3rd, you know, some of the documents were added kind of late. So I just wanted to get some clarification on the GCDA and the DGF.
Okay, so G, GC?
Those are the felon ones.
Okay.
To... I think that's simple. If I am recalling correctly, there were only applying to crimes of moral turpitude and not to all felonies. And it was not all felonies excluding barrier felonies. It was only felonies of moral turpitude who were 20 years in the past.
Who'd have their rights restored.
Your rights had been restored.
Voting rights restored, yes.
By the governor, right.
Yeah.
So it's not... I wanted to clarify that, that it's not all felons.
Exactly.
And the policy specifies it has to be 20 years previous from your date of becoming a contractor or becoming an employee. So I do think that that... And does everybody know what a crime of moral turpitude is? It is things like fraud or perjury, the lying...
Right.
Lying crimes, so for our future discussion or consideration of that, wanted to put that out there.
Right. There are certain felonies that are not of moral turpitude, which constitute a barrier to employment and working with children.
Correct.
So the legislation updated that certain people with felony convictions that are more than 20 years old, that have had their rights restored, may be eligible for employment. So I think that's something we need to discuss, because our policy said, basically, in a nutshell, no, they are not eligible. Anyone with felony conviction is not eligible for employment within MCPS. But we have to recognize that sometimes there are things that people do when they're 18, 19 years old. Because they're 18, 19 years old, and their brains aren't fully developed, that they learn from, and that they grow from and become better people. So we really have to sit down and think about those. And if we were to say add the word "may," how would we spell that out so that it's clear? Because I think a number of people, I think Ms. Brown and you have both said, the word "may" is a very subjective term, and it's open to a wide level of interpretation.
Yeah. I just didn't want the public out there thinking that.
No.
Any felon, convicted of any crime, that we're not considering that. Like, these are specific crimes within a specific faraway window with a full restoration. Yeah, there's actually quite a bit of hoops.
There's a process, and it's a lot of work to get your rights restored.
Yes.
Yeah, but we're not proposing at this time to do that. I just want to make sure that you're not mistaken. Are you saying that we're proposing that right now?
I guess I'm not clear on what's being proposed or not.
So I want it to be a discussion, because I think the full board needs to have input. We, as a committee, we recommended not changing our policy and not putting in the word "may." But we are three members, and the rule of the board is seven individuals. So if that's something that the board does want to discuss, we need to be open to that. We, as a committee, recommended keeping it the same.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. So my next question is on the cellphone policy, JFCCM. Why doesn't... Shouldn't that have a dash M? Because we are taking out the form language about, you know, we're taking out a whole chunk saying CR and adding CR regulation.
Hold on just a second. Let me actually get to it. All right, Student Cell Phone and Smart Device Possession and Use. Now, what were you saying that we?
Because in the VSBA language, they have like a section, this applies to grades K through 5, this applies to grade 6, 7, 8, this applies to blah, 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 but we have our own policy that's now becoming a regulation.
Right.
So we took out that model language, and we are putting in our own. So it's not, you know, it doesn't have a dash M, so I'm just wondering why it doesn't have a dash M.
So what it would be is, we have the adoption... we have the option, excuse me, to adopt the VSBA's model policy. And then everything is spelled out in more detail if our policy becomes a regulation. So it would be adopting the VSBA model policy as a whole, and then our regulation. Albeit, the M on the end, that's not a modification M. That's just an M from the VSBA. Oh, I'm sorry, on which one? JFCCM. Because if it was modification, if it was a modified policy, it would be a dash M.
There's a lot of papers to look through here.
And what we would do in the line that's green, where it says, "The School Board of the City of Manassas establishes the following procedures in regulation." And then we would just put in that regulation. The VSBA does allow that in policies, in VSBA model policies, for you... For the school division to put in like the regulation name or the regulation number without the policy being a modified policy.
Oh, okay. Okay. It doesn't count. Okay. My misunderstanding.
That's okay.
And I would just like to speak in support of if we are referring to Standards of Student Conduct in our policy handbook, I really do think that we should call our code of conduct the Standards of Student Conduct, that these things should match. That's all from me.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Policy questions?
I don't have questions that this is stated, but I guess I'll wait until after you finish. Do you have a lot more?
I don't have that much more to say.
I mean, I have questions on Policies.
Yes, absolutely.
On KGD, that's the Student Overdose Notification.
Yes.
And it says "school-connected." How are we defining "school-connected"? Is it... Could it be just a student of ours? Or does it have to be on school property, or?
So, a school-connected overdose means an overdose of a student enrolled in the school in the Division that occurs on the premises of the school during regular hours or during school sanctioned activities, whether on or off the premises of such school. So that's what would make it a school-connected overdose. Yeah, like a field trip, or a sports event, or something where we're in another building, or, you know, it could be orchestra concert, it could be anything like that.
But not at home?
Not at home.
Even though they're a student?
Not at home.
Okay.
Yeah. It just says suspected. And the thing is, is that this policy would require the school to notify the student, parent of each student in the relevant school, even if it is just suspected at that time. But then if it's determined that there were inaccuracies in the initial notification, then we are required, as a Division, to follow up with the public and all of the individuals we informed of the suspected overdoses.
Okay. And then, are we going to talk about BCA-M?
BCA-M, yes. I know Ms. Miles wanted to talk about it, and you want to talk about it if anyone else has questions on it as well.
Okay. So regarding the proposed changes to School Board Policy BCA, which is our organizational meeting, the current policy overview is that at the organizational meeting each January, board members nominate and elect a chair and a vice chair for a one-year term. Any school board member is eligible for nomination. Leadership positions are determined by majority vote. And the proposed changes are to limit the chair to two years within a four-year term, and to rotate the vice chair position among the members. I do have some concerns about this, and I'll be interested in hearing anybody's thoughts on how this benefits the school board. But imposing restrictions on future boards is both shortsighted and deeply concerning. The strength of our governance lies in the ability of the full board to determine its leadership based on who is best suited to serve at that time without limits. Let's be clear. The issue here is not with the current policy. The issue arises when members struggle to accept the principle of majority rule. Just because an outcome doesn't align with individual preferences does not mean a change in policy or position is needed. What is best for this school board and our future school boards is to preserve flexibility, trust the collective judgment of the members, and keep options open. Change can be good, and we should make changes that move us forward to attaining our goals. Changing this policy is not one of them, and frankly, takes away from the focus of what we should be working on: student outcomes. More importantly, we must remember that the power is not in the leadership of the board. The power is in the whole board, working together, to do what is best for our students, our staff, our families, and our community. Thank you. Ms. Miles?
I am actually glad that we're seeking to make this change to ensure all our members will have the opportunity to serve as vice chair. I think it's a much-needed change, and it's actually very similar to our neighbors. Prince William has a vice chair rotating. And while we're very grateful for our current leadership over the years, I believe putting guardrails in place to ensure all members are given the opportunity to serve as chair will ensure the continued freshness of our board.
And I'll say that, you know, even though Prince William, they do alter their vice chair, but they have a seated chairperson. They know it's elected by the people. Their chair is there for a solid four years, and so that makes sense to rotate a vice chair.
And Dr. Jones, you had an statement?
Yes, I have down... I do not see the need for imposing term limits on the chair position. Our board already hosts annual elections for both chair and vice chair roles, and every member has an equal vote in the process. Under the current system, a member may serve more than two terms if reelected, which allows flexibility while still maintaining a democratic process. Consistency in leadership is valuable. Frequent changes in the chair role may disrupt board cohesiveness and slow progress on long-term initiatives. The vice chair position in particular is too critical to be subject to simple rotation. The vice chair position in particular is too critical to be subject to simple rotation. Experience and stability in the role helps ensure effective support and continuity in leadership. The existing election process already provides ample opportunity for all members to serve in leadership roles. There is no need to restrict future boards by implementing term limits that may reduce leadership opinions, options, especially if qualified and willing leaders are limited. We should preserve flexibility to meet the evolving needs of the board while prioritizing stability and performance.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Anyone else? Mrs. Spohm?
I guess I'll just weigh in. Oh, I'm already, you know, I do believe that this is a skill set that needs to be developed over time. I think that a two-year limit is just kind of needlessly complicating things because every year you get a chance to vote in a new chair. As a vice chair, I can say that it, it is a considerable amount of work. So I'm kind of betwixt and between as to how to vote for, you know, I don't know how you develop the skill set without giving people a chance to, to serve the office. But I will say that, you know, shadowing takes time. And so I don't know that, the way that the system is working right now seems to limit the least number of people. But, you know, I, I can hear that there's a, a need for a change. And so I guess I would believe if I had to make the change, that changing the vice chair option is probably the better one to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Brezcha?
So I, I support the recommendation coming out of the committee. I think that it is a good one. I, I hear what everybody's saying about the majority rules, obviously, obviously that's true. Anybody who doesn't like that, it doesn't matter. You could feel however you want about it because what's legally binding is what at least four members do. What I think that this policy does and what we have been reminded to do through our governance training is to not think of this board as a majority-minority board, to not think of this board as four to three, or five to two, or six to one, or not to think of ourselves in this way. We are seven equal members and I would like to see a set of norms develop where there is some flexibility and deference to, to that so that we are not in a position where we are having highly contested, you know, chair elections. Like, it's, it's true, the board can make a change at any time, but if we are, I would, I think it will help our team functioning and is in alignment with what we, with what, how we've been encouraged to think of ourselves and how we've been encouraged to interact with ourselves through our VSB A governance training if we adopt this and give it a shot. We can always retire it, you know, if we find that it's not working out, you know, we, the majority can do whatever it wants with respect to its policies. The board controls the policies. That's one of our, we've only got three jobs and policies are one of them. But I do think that we should give it a shot. We've made all these trips down to Charlottesville. I think we should make them count. That's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
I'm new on the board. And yes, although ideally it should be this board who decides who they want to lead them for the year, that doesn't always turn out to be the same because we are seven board members. So this year we had three and three and the only deciding vote was the chair who voted for herself. So we got a four-seven vote. So it's not the majority, it's not the collective. We would like, like Ms. Brezcha said, to be the collective because that would be ideal. However, because we are human beings and we're still growing in grace, we don't always put the best version of ourselves here. And there are monopolies, there are minorities and majorities, there are favorites. And I think that this term limit offer us an opportunity to have that ideal collective decision-making, that shared responsibility and leadership that does not exist currently. I hear that experience is important, yet there were members here who had the experience and stated that they are not ready to serve. So experience is not the end-all. It's experience and willingness and recognizing that experience. So I think we need to have a growth mindset. We need to get away from this monopoly. For the past twenty years, Manassas City Public Schools has had a monopoly on chair positions. It's something that has been transferred from one person to another and it needs to end. We really need to be focused on that growth mindset. We really need to make changes in Manassas City Public Schools. And the only way that we grow is through shared leadership, which at this point we do not have.
I have one more thing to say. I just want to give kind of like a background of how we came to this because it was not something that was just put down on paper and they were like, guess. We both went back and forth kind of on the data behind different chairs and how, you know, they, how long their terms are, what is the desired term for different types of chair, or type of boards. And we did some extensive research on it and this is what we came to because of that research. And, you know, not everyone's ideas were taken. We came to a compromise because there were some things that Ms. Brown had mentioned, something I mentioned, and then also Lisa and we kind, or Ms. Stevens, and we kind of came to this as a compromise, kind of putting forth all of our, our ideas. I don't want anyone to think that it was like, you know, one thing and we were ready and we were set. But I do believe in change. And I believe that change will only occur if we allow it to. Change is not going to occur if we stay stuck in the same way we always do things. And, and it has been something that has happened here, like Ms. Brown has mentioned, that chairs have just passed on from year to year and there hasn't been any change. And it's also because maybe we aren't comfortable in taking that leadership role for whatever the reason, maybe we don't have time. But I think allowing vice chair to change from year to year is helpful and also giving the chair position to other people who might want, want to say, hey, I need to step up to also do more than just what I'm doing, so.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I can go ahead and give my final statement, but I, well, I support the term limits. The board chair position should be a shared responsibility, not a yearly permanent position voted by major, favorites or whomever the majority of the favor people are. Term limits create a space for new ideas. It prevents the consolidation of power and encourages all of our participation, not just the ones who are in a favor. Rotating leadership roles promotes accountability. It reflects our democratic values and strengthens trust within the board and our community. No one person should be leading indefinitely for term after term without giving others an opportunity and without looking for perspectives for growth for Manassas City Public Schools. We have got to do what is best for Manassas City Public Schools, not what one person wants to do or believes is the purpose in this board.
Thank you. Yes?
Can you explain to me how the rotation works? You're saying you're going to rotate, rotate vice chairs. Tell me how that works.
Um, that is something that does need to be worked out. Looking at the Prince William County policy, they don't actually spell out how they do it either. So that's something we could ask them about. Or we could just establish a process. It could be added into the policy. It could be a process that we all just agree on. That's one of the reasons that this is not going to be on the consent agenda at our next meeting, why it will be on the action agenda for more discussion as there already is quite a bit of discussion concerning it right now.
And Ms. Stevens, I think we also mentioned that we, we would give opportunities to board members to put in their name, just like we typically do right now. If you're interested in serving, you put up your name and then you, if it's, if you haven't served, then you, you can put your name through and then you will still get voted because there might be, there might be three or four members who are willing to serve as chair or vice chair. So that was, there would still be a vote. It would still be a democratic process. So we're just asking for the growth mindset to allow this position what it's meant to do, focus in on the growth of the whole school district and the board members.
And I think one of the things with the vice chair position on rotating it is it gives school board members who may be good leaders but are not willing to speak up because they don't want the limelight, it may give them a greater opportunity to have that leadership position and to grow from that leadership position that they may not previously have had an opportunity to do.
And I'd just like to say one more thing. I, I want all of us to remember that you don't have to be chair or vice chair to lead and to do, and to focus on the school system and to do what you need to do for the school system. You don't need a title to lead. We've been elected. We all desire to be on the school board, so we don't need a title to do the work that we, we were, you know, we're here to do. We don't need a title for that at all.
And that's very true as well. I think everyone sitting on the dais has some strong valid points. This is not a discussion or a decision that was come too lightly. And I think we all benefit from having the opportunity to think through it, think through the pros and cons. And when we come back in two weeks, if we have additional questions, if we have additional concerns or statements we would like to make, we'll have the opportunity to do so at that time as well.
And you don't need a title, but it doesn't have to be a monopoly either or a political game. So, and that's what this policy modification is aiming to get rid of because we do have a monopoly and we do have a political game going on. And I will urge anyone who's interested in the history of Manassas City Public Schools, just look in the last twenty years who has been chair. It has been passed on as if it was something that no one else had a right to unless you've been chosen by the person that believes you have that experience. So this needs to be a democratic process and it has not been.
Oh, yes, it has. And if the seated chair is performing effectively and it reflects the will of the board, their peers will choose to nominate and reelect them. Conversely, if the chair's performance is not meeting expectations, the board has the opportunity to select new leadership through the nomination and election process at the organizational meeting. And every member gets to vote.
I will say, it's definitely not about performance and I want to make that clear. It's not about, it's just about giving more minds the ability to lead because it is a different leadership position. It's a different way for the community to see you as well. And I think, we also mentioned, I know when we were talking, we were also talking about the fact that we wanted to also have stipulations on to when you can be chair. And then we decided that that wasn't right because there are some people who have the ability to do it right when they get elected, whereas others may want to kind of see, kind of feel their way through. But depending on their experience level, they may want to run for chair in their first year. So we decided against that, I know when we were talking. But I want to make that 100% clear that it has nothing to do with performance, why we decided on this. It was just to give opportunities for other people to lead, so.
Mrs. Brezcha, last comment.
So I think as a group, we've actually made very good comments together in terms of coming together as a group. I have gotten a lot out of our governance training and learning to think.
And learning to think of ourselves, you know, as a group of seven and not as a group of, you know, a five and a group of two, or a group of four and a group of three, right? I think that that has been good for us. I think it has been good for kids. I think it will pay dividends if we can continue to build on that momentum. And, you know, the past is informative, the present is informative, but the, this policy is for the future. You know, it is not, you know, it doesn't impact 2025. This is for January 2026 if this would go into effect. And so I encourage everybody to think about what are our aspirations for our governance team functioning? Do we want to hold on to this concept of, you know, how tightly do we want to hold on to this concept of majority, majority, majority? And do we want to try something new, different, and uncomfortable, past and present aside, that will, I think, push us more in the, in a, in a positive and productive direction?
Mrs. Stevens, could you please proceed with legislative priorities?
Yes. So to discuss the legislative priorities, up until last year, we only shared our legislative priorities with our legislators at the November joint legislative breakfast. This past summer, summer 2024, was the first time we had a mid-year legislative breakfast, joint breakfast with city council and our legislators, Michelle Malgino and Dana Carone. Last year being the first time we did it, we didn't present legislative priorities. We presented our strategic plan. This year, however, the decision was made quite recently based on action by the city council. They'll be presenting their legislative priorities for us to present our legislative priorities as well instead of the strategic plan. The current legislative priorities, which are shown up on the screens, were approved on October 22 of 2024 and were presented at our joint breakfast in November of 2024. A little background on why we're now having this mid-year breakfast. We realized that waiting to share the important things about our school division until November was really too late because our legislators are required to have all bills submitted by the end of November. It does not give them or us enough time to discuss and really come to a meeting of the minds on potential legislation. So that's why last year we decided to have that mid-year legislative breakfast. Our legislate, our current legislative priorities were discussed in the policy committee meeting because they'll be presented on July 15 last week. After much discussion, the committee chose to recommend no changes to this document you see on the board prior to next week's breakfast. The issue that was, there were issues that were discussed. The issue discussed in depth was whether to include collective bargaining as a priority. If you'll recall, the board chose to adopt by a vote of five to, five to two margin this past spring on a resolution indicating that the division will not at this time engage in the collective bargaining process. We discussed whether to add language to our priorities indicating that we either do not support legislation establishing or expanding collective bargaining, that we support legislation that allocates dedicated funding to collective bargaining, support legislation that maintains local control for public school divisions, or to leave the legislative priorities as is and update or modify them for the November joint breakfast. We came together as a committee and felt that the resolution just passed concerning collective bargaining adequately explains the division's current thinking on collective bargaining and we did not feel it needed to be addressed in the document at this time. In addition, we struggled to identify which foundational pillar of the strategic plan collective bargaining would fall under and how to add it without making major adjustments to the document itself. And to explain in a little bit more detail, our legislative breakfast is in a week. If we were to make changes to this document, we would need to make those changes, agree as a board on those changes and vote on them before we could present them at the legislative breakfast. There really isn't enough time for us to do an adequate job of modifying, editing, or updating the document in a little bit more than a week. We would do a great disservice to our school division, to the city council, and to our legislators if we cobbled something together very, very quickly. But moving forward, it is recommended that we address legislative priorities at our summer retreat. Thank you to Ms. Brezcha for bringing that up when we spoke. I don't know when we spoke about it, but we did speak about it, that we really should start thinking about. That we really should start thinking about this at our summer retreat. I'd like to further expand on that idea by suggesting we begin the discussion on legisla- legislative priorities at a spring work session with the goal of finalizing them at the retreat. So we are not facing a need to make changes at the last possible minute. Yep. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I guess mine's not a question either, but I, I think we've made a lot of progress. Um, and just to fill in some details, last year when we met in the summer for legislative priorities, I believe the agenda was that we would hear from our legislators what their priorities were. And then we would give them our priorities in November. Um, you know, we've, we've come a long way. We understand if we want to have our voices be heard. We really do need to have our legislative priorities ready, um, uh, in the summer. So, um, you know, I guess my only request is I'd like to move to a two, a, a twice a year update so that we will be ready next year. But, you know, I would have liked, and I know there wasn't enough time. I come up with these ideas at the, at the last minute. But to see some kind of a rework on this, just so we're not handing people, um, in, that are watching the same exact document. I mean, I wasn't asking necessarily for content to be changed, but you know, we go from one format to another, something that just looks a little bit fresh. So I like our idea. I like our timing. We're getting there. We're making a lot of progress. We're, you know, we've, we've moved a long way in a short amount of time. But that would be my only request is just that one time a year would be maybe a brochure, a foldable ju- brochure, same, same content or an opportunity to update just the slight, the slightest amount in November. Then would be an updated legislative priority, you know, pamphlet, something like that.
Yeah. And I think if we're presenting our legislative priorities in the summer, we can talk about how we can further that discussion in November. Because in November, we're getting close to sending our legislators to Richmond. All of the bills need to be submitted by the end of November and that's when they start having their conversations with each other in the different committees. And I, I haven't figured out exactly how that's going to look. But how we can take that November meeting to really further and really drive home what our priorities are. Because when we just had that November legislative breakfast, we were missing a golden opportunity and we were just paying lip service to what our school division needs to be successful.
That's right.
So I think that this is an evolving plan. It's an evolving idea and I, I look forward to hearing from what everyone has to say. And I also believe very firmly that on legislative priorities, this is something that should not just be developed by committee of three. It needs the input from all seven board members to have enough perspectives to properly identify what we need from our legislators in Richmond. And I feel we would do a disservice if we as a committee of three came up with legislative priorities, put it all together and then presented it to the rest of you and it didn't reflect what you feel is important. It needs to reflect what we all feel is important. So that's why I think it would be best to start it off at a work session and then finalize at the retreat. And it's something that we don't want to rush to get done. It's something we want to be thoughtful. And we want to be intentional to make it the strongest document we can to drive home who we are and what we need.
Just one last thing. I would also like to, um, strongly suggest that we use, um, especially because we are in a joint session, but that we take advantage of the oper- any opportunity we can manufacture to speak with the shared lobbyist that we have.
Yes.
Because he is out there and he does show up to these events. Um, and so I think that we should make our voices heard that way as well.
I didn't hear what you said.
Well, we have a shared lobbyist with the city.
And we need, we need to utilize him to, to our, to our benefit.
Thank you. I didn't hear.
Ms. Miles?
Um, I would just say I agree with Ms. Stevens. I think that we should take a work session just to focus on it, not do anything else and just make sure we're all on the same page, um, and, and definitely refreshing it, um, like Ms. Ball said as well. So.
Anything else on policies or policy work of the committee?
Believe it or not, that's it.
Well, you guys have been working very hard and we appreciate the work that you have done and the committee.
And I want to say that we got this all done in two and a half hours. So we can get it done.
Good talking there. All right. Um, all right. Moving along in our agenda, next up under student achievement, we have Virtual Virginia Academy. Virginia Virtual Academy. Pardon me. And Ms. Suzanne Sloan is here with us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Newman, staff, other board members. It's a pleasure to be back in front of you again. Thank you very much. I appreciate the questions. I did receive some questions and responded to each. I don't think I missed any.
No.
Um, but I, I responded to those. And when, I said when, when we have an agreement together, I can give you, um, digital copies of all of our student handbook, our high school handbook, our teacher handbook, all of that. But nobody said I couldn't bring hard copies. So I checked with my people here. So I have some if anybody wants to see them later. Just our handbook and policies. It's a public school. It's an online public school. So clearly we have to follow the same policies that you do as the Virginia Department of Education puts forward. Two and a half hours, by the way, on commit, on policy, I am impressed. As a vice chair, I served as vice chair, two of my four years in the first term and two of my, uh, in the second term. And that takes significant time to look at those policies. So I appreciate all of your hard work on that. I am happy to open the deck again to look at what I shared with you last time. I'm happy to, uh, respond to individual questions. Um, anything that you have and, uh, that would be something that would be helpful towards getting an agreement. We look forward to working with Manassas City Schools and as you know, I love to be here. So thank you for inviting me back.
Questions or comments for Ms. Sloan? Ms. Stevens?
Thank you for answering our questions. I read through your answers today. I didn't have a chance to click on all the links. Um, students who are out of district who apply to Vava can be from anywhere in the state.
That's correct.
My question for you is, you know, we're a 10-square-mile division. So we're very close to our Prince William County and our Manassas Park and even our Fairfax County neighbors. What if we have students in one of the surrounding divisions who are homeschooled, who want to do Vava but only want to do it through MCPS? Is there a way they can guarantee which school division they'll be linked with?
So the Virginia Virtual Academy students don't necessarily, um, ha- associate with an individual division. As I mentioned, Gini, we have nine school divisions that take out-of-division students and we work with 21. So let me give you an example of one, like Bristol City, for example. They just have their own Bristol City students who attend the school division. They don't take any students out of division. The reason why they do not is because they don't have the state funding. Can't remember which one of you asked me that question. How, how does the school division, how are you able to do this? It's based on funding formula and LCI. But they don't have the capacity and they don't have the state funding to be able to support the, the, uh, the partnership. So your, your basic question is asking if a Prince William County student, a parent decides, I really want to do full-time online school and they want to join the Virginia Virtual Academy, they're a member of the, they're a student in the Virginia Virtual Academy. They may be on the power school roster of Manassas City. They may be on Radford City. They may be on Patrick County. They may be, right? Because Virginia Virtual Academy encompasses all students. Um, in your brick and mortar buildings, if a Prince William County student wanted to come and attend school at Weems Elementary, you would have to go through superintendent approval and you may, I don't know if you do this, but we did in Falkir. You may charge a fee for out-of-division students. That, that's what we did in, in Falkir County. I think we only had about 25, you know, students who wanted to come. Falkir is an enormous county compared to Manassas City in terms of ge- geography, right? 10 miles across. When I was teaching at Weems, I think, I think pretty much every student in my class was a walker. I had maybe two, two that rode the bus. So very, everybody lived just right there within the school division. But, um, any student can apply as long as they have completed all of the enrollment documents required. Same enrollment documents that would be for a traditional school and if they meet your eligibility requirements. We have suggested eligibility requirements. I did send a link to that and it is on the website for you to see. We talked about, you know, not every student succeeds in an online setting. So we put some, uh, eligibility requirements together. You know, some of the school division, uh, superintendent said, oh, I'm not sure I want to do that. Then they looked at it and said, no, that actually makes perfect sense. This seems like a, a group of students that maybe would, we would want to have some, um, requirements around. So as long as they met those requirements, Ms. Stevens, they could be a member of the Virginia Virtual Academy and could be a student with us.
So, and I, I'm trying to picture this in my head. So a Vava student who's part, who becomes an MCPS Vava student, when they're in synchronous learning, can they be with Vava students from all around the state or will it just, so it could be any of them?
Uh, all students together.
Okay.
Yes. We don't, we don't put, you know, all eighth grade students who live in, you know, Manassas or surrounding counties in one particular class. Yep. The whole, whole Commonwealth.
So how do you determine which students who are out of district come to MCPS for Vava?
So as you might know, enrollment started, uh, March 15th. So students started to come in and apply. We also have students who are returning, who are saying, I want to come back. I'm a seventh grader. I'd like to be in eighth grade next year. So we started filling those seats with current student partners, uh, Vava partners. Right? So if there were students in third grade, let's say in Patrick County in good standing, they wanted to come back and they're in fourth grade, they're now in Patrick County, fourth grade. So we filled those seats for those school divisions that we already have partnerships with. We have now begun what I referred to last time as a waitlist. We have more student applicants than we have seats for, hence why I'm here. So yes, that's, that's how we would do that. So that they've started to come in. July 1st kind of is our, what we call change over time. We take our seniors out who've graduated. We take families maybe who have moved, families who are no longer interested in having their students, um, attend the online academy. Those students are, we call it a mass withdrawal. So we take all of those students out, leaving the seats open for the next group of students who are trying to apply. So we've had a heavy, uh, application process and students are, are awaiting a seat right now. Those students would come to you.
Mrs. Ball?
I know we have like 3,300 spots, give or take, um, that you would like to see us be able to fill. Do you have that many on your waitlist?
We do not. We do not have that many right now. That's your capacity. That's how many.
You're not looking for us to ramp up in year one?
I would not recommend that. If you, if you said, let's take 3,300 in year one, I, I might caution you to, to start a little bit, you know, slower.
I understood most of everything that you already said, but that was one thing I wasn't sure if you were looking. So this is a, a build it over time.
Exactly.
Can I ask how many people are in your, on your waitlist?
Yes, I think we're at almost 12, 1250, 1280 maybe. It was like ticking up as I was asking the question today. So yeah. A lot of stu- this is high time for students making their decision in, in middle of July. It's a really good time for parents to start enrolling. Plus it gives them the time to come in and do our learning coach training. Because we want the adults to be really involved in what we're doing as well, which is kind of a strength of the program.
And so are we where you're top candidate right now? I mean, would you, would you look for us to take those 1250?
If you, if you're interested in taking as many students as we have on the waitlist, we would love to start enrolling them as soon as you would allow us to. So we would enroll them right in.
And, and I mean, you've said many times, we don't have to do that.
You, you are in complete control. You can say which grade levels you would like. You can say the eligibility requirements. You can say I'd like stricter requirements in that. You can say I'd like more lenient requirements in that. Yes, it's your program and you're completely in charge of enrollment.
Ms. Miles?
So as far as calendar, what calendar do you guys follow? Do you follow our calendar?
Yep. And we have the calendar and it's actually in here and I think you are the lucky people. Your, yours is almost identical. Like first day of school, last day of school is nearly identical. As you may know, some of the Southwest schools start earlier than you start in, in Manassas and some of them finish a little earlier. Um, we try to take something in between, but the students have, you know, they're, they can work 24/7. So once school starts, they can be working on the weekend. They can be working on holidays. They can work, you know, days that you have a, a school holiday. They can be working.
And I know you answered this question for me, but I, I would like to, for you to reiterate this again. Um, we know that we can take over 3,000 students, correct? How is that possible and why are we, out of all the Northern Virginia districts, the one that you came to?
Yes. So, um, and hopefully my, my explanation made sense, but it, it follows the funding formula. We have a consultant from the Virginia Department of Education who's worked in the finance field there for, uh, 23 years. She is, uh, smarter than I, I aim to ever understand about the funding formula. We'll be on conversations with people sometimes in other states who are saying, oh my gosh, this Virginia funding formula is wildly complicated. I don't know if anybody remembers Kent Dickey who just, um, stepped down. She trained Kent Dickey. So this is a, a very, very wise consultant. She takes your LCI and she uses the funding formula and does a match as she adds 100 students, 200 students, 300 students. What she's trying to do is never get to a point where your local funding would have to kick in. Because you would never want to be sitting here as a, a board member telling people in Manassas City that they're paying for students in another, in another locality, right? So it's the, the state funding that's following wherever the student is coming to Manassas City. And she gives us the names of those schools and counties and it changes every year, you know, a little bit. This one's in, now this one's out. None of our current partners are, um, able to take more students. They're at their capacity. That's why we have so many seats open. Uh, you are one of only two in Northern Virginia that has the capacity and the state funding that fits into what we call kind of the sweet spot, right? Can't really pay for the program if your state funding is under about 7,500. You might want to be a partner with us, but if you could only take 50 students, that might not be worth doing. Taking, you know, 50 students at a time. So we try to look at localities that can take at least 400 students and then are above 7,500 in state funding. So you're right, right at that level. So we have a list of 25. I think I told you last time, I have, you know, my list from my boss telling me, these are the ones we should be going to. And, you know, Mass- Manassas City is my favorite. So, and I can say that out loud and that's okay.
Anyone else to my right? To my left? Mrs. Prejean?
So I have a question that is maybe more for us or maybe also for you. When I was going through, um, I went to school quality profile and was looking at some of the divisions that you're partnering with. And most of them seem to, the ones that seem to take out of district students, it's kind of funny when you look at their enrollment because, you know, there will be 100 kids in seventh grade in 2022. And then in 2023, there's 450 kids in seventh grade in, you know, at a specific, but it's like the school. It's like, you know, Buchanan Middle School or something. I don't, I'm just pulling Buchanan out of the air. I don't remember which one it was. But that is not what, how we are going to be structuring it. When we, when in the future, you know, if we have this go through and a school year goes, comes to pass, someone will look at school quality profile and they will see 10 schools instead of nine. And so I wanted to get it on the record as to why we're doing it that way.
That's the recommended best practice, but that's, that's certainly up to you.
So there are two options. One is to make a separate school, which is the one that we are recommending as staff. The other would be to take those students and funnel them into our current nine schools. Uh, when I look at how we look at our data, how we prepare for our students that are in person, I think mixing the two would, um, interfere with that process. So I want Virginia Virtual of Manassas to be over here by themselves. So we can look at that data by itself and then have our nine schools that we currently have in person to focus on that data.
I mean, that makes perfect sense to me. It does occur to me that, uh, part of what we are hoping for with Vava is to help staff, uh, to get instructional services for our alternative program. So those students are, will no longer be affiliated with their base school. They will be moved on to, they will count as Manassas Virtual Academy students.
Correct.
And if it's partway through the year, you're just wherever you spend more than 50% of your time is where you count.
It's no different than when kids transfer in and out now. They will just be moved over. They're still ours, but they'll just be moved to the virtual academy.
Yeah. If you are placed out, if you are placed from, you know, Baldwin Intermediate into our alternative program, you are no longer a Baldwin Intermediate student. You are a Manassas Virtual Academy student. Okay.
All right. Um, I'm under the, in the understanding that, um,
I can explain it.
Great.
So, Chair, we are asking, uh, if the board would be willing to waive second reading. Um, for the reason, from talking to, um, Ms. Sloan and her staff, if we want those students to start on time, we would need to start making the adjustments into our power school and getting those kids enrolled. So we would like for, uh, you to waive second reading, um, so we can move forward if that is the board's wishes.
I have questions.
Yes.
Um, so Dr. Newman, what do we need on our end as far as staffing is concerned to begin Vava?
What do we need for, on our end?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Do we need any staffing changes or additions?
Well, that's. Yes and no.
Okay.
Yes, when we start doing the alternative, if approved by council, then through us.
Yeah, we have things to stick through.
That's going to cost a lift for us.
Okay.
As far as the agreement, we would work with Virginia Virtual Academy on how we would start the enrollment process for those students.
And so I, I'm, I'm assuming, but you know, we know, we shouldn't make assumptions. We would start Vava General Ed Academy and then start alternative?
Yes, we would not be able to, just because we don't have an alternative program currently.
Right.
Um, so our focus would be with the students. Um, I think it's forty-eight now, I think it was fifty-seven before, but there'll be forty-eight that are current Manassas residents. That we would have to get into our system. And then the out of district, we would have to get in through the Virginia Virtual Academy of Manassas.
And our team is at the ready. So moving, moving them in, it would be a matter of just allowing us to work with your power school. Um, whoever has, uh, power school access, who's your person that enrolls students, if a student walked into, uh, uh, you know, reception area. Uh, tomorrow and wanted to enroll in Manassas City schools, it's the same, putting them into the, um, power school. It's a very quick process.
This might be a Dr. Newman question also, but will we be? Like logoing and launching this school? I don't know, you know, is the newspaper going to say Manassas City is happy to host its tenth school, the Virginia Virtual Academy?
We can go as far as you want with advertising. Uh, it is not, it was not our goal to advertise this as a tenth school.
Okay.
Um, but it is an option.
Okay. I mean, maybe we can discuss the merits of that offline.
Um, Chair, I move. I wanted to say something before we go forward.
Sorry.
Yeah, I had a couple other, so I know we have, like, say a student doesn't qualify for homebound instruction. It's probably a question for you, Dr. Newman, doesn't, um, qualify for homebound, um, because they don't have a five or four, an IEP. Um, but the traditional school setting is not working for them. It, would this be an option that we would offer to them? Um, or would this?
This is another pathway that we could use.
Okay, great, great. Um, and then the other question, um, what would prevent current students and families? Once they do find this out, um, from them pulling their children out of their brick, brick and mortar school and saying, oh, we're enrolling. Right? Like, this has been the option we've been looking for, like.
You may have some students and parents who choose to do that, and, and we hope certainly that some parents do that. Manassas City residents who want to join you, this program, need to have superintendent approval. I pulled numbers this morning just to check, and I had been saying about one percent, and I was so proud of myself that it was almost to the decimal point. Um, just to use as an example, for the last five years, we've been partnered with all schools in Region Seven. If you totaled all school-aged children who are attending and who are homeschooling, home, attending. I, I took out the homeschool because I made sure I did that. Anyone attending the Region Seven schools, there are forty-nine thousand, five hundred and fourteen students. Who are attend all of Region Seven schools. All totaled, they have four hundred and eighty-three total students. So I was almost like to the decimal, ne-, you know, fifteen years of data, less than one percent of students. It, it really, we have not seen the mass exodus, but I do hope some students, um, find this to be a great opportunity. And some of the students who are in Manassas City would make the decision to enroll.
So, let's say I'm a parent and I choose to put my child in Vava. Will my child be guaranteed, guaranteed to be in the same, in Vava through the same division every year? Or is it possible that every year it will change?
There may be a change. There are certain school divisions that only take certain grade levels. There's, we, as for example, we put all of our high school students in one. It's, it's just easier at this point. We now don't have enough seats, so we need more seats for high school, so hopefully we can talk about grade levels. Um, some divisions like to start K through eight, some like to start K through ten, some like to, you know, maybe not just put juniors and seniors in yet. Yet, you may have some different decisions because you're going to be putting some alt-, alternative ed students in. Um, but it, it is entirely possible that you would stay the whole time with the same school division if we, they were a K through twelve. For example, I had a student who walked the stage, I think I was telling you last time in May, who had been with Vava from kindergarten. Graduated in twelfth grade and moved up each time. So they graduated with a Radford City Public School diploma. With a transcript from the Virginia Virtual Academy and been in the same division the whole time.
So it's possible for a child, because my concern would be, you know, as a parent, my child being in Vava. But technically being in different school divisions year over year over year, because that does tend to get a little bit confusing. And, and I would imagine, although it's virtual, that may be kind of stressful, so.
Yeah, the transcript is, is the same, other, whichever division you are. It's the Virginia Virtual Academy transcript, which is approved by the Virginia, Virginia Department of Education. You're, where it, you know, stands out to you, which division you're in, is when you're graduating, right? And there's your diploma.
For clarification though, if a student lives in Manassas City, they are Manassas City.
Absolutely.
Regardless.
One hundred percent. All of those students, i- i- when the agreement is signed or when, when you all agree. The first thing we would do is move the students who are currently residing in Manassas City, who are on different rosters, back to you. And I think we talked through, I think there was even a slide on that. The, the revenue, um, comes back. The state funding returns to you.
Any other questions? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Spall, do you have a?
Chair, I move that we waive second reading and execute and enter into the contract. For the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year with the Virtual Virginia Academy powered by K-12.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Spall, seconded by Mrs. Bresch. That the school board waive second reading and execute.
And enter.
And enter into an agreement with K-12 Virtual Schools LLC for educational products and services.
Is it for the twenty-five, twenty-six year or is it?
Oh, twenty-six, wait, twenty.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yes.
Where am I?
So it's year by year.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Quick question for Dr. Newman. What grade levels would be, will we be offering?
That has not been decided. We have to do that as a group.
Okay, thank you. I can give you numbers too. That might be helpful to you.
Ms. Miles?
Um, I just have a statement. Um, I want to first, I want to first, I'll thank Dr. Newman and Mr. Cufeller for bringing this idea to the board. I'm excited about a few things about Vava and what it will do for our school district. First, it will give parents another school option, then our brick and mortar school without having to move. It may give a student who's struggling in a traditional setting a chance at an on-time graduation. It will bring in a significant amount of revenue that we can hopefully use to take care of some of our school board priorities that are currently not in our budget. Like ensuring students continue to receive free breakfast and lunch no matter our political co- climate. Um, hiring more of our critical needs staff and among other things listed on our unfunded priority list. So I, I definitely agree with, um, doing this. Thank you.
Well said, Ms. Miles. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. We look forward to working with you.
Look forward to working with you as well. Would you like me to leave these with, quick, there you go. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Moving along to our next item on the discussion agenda is facilities and maintenance. And we will get an update from Mr. Cufeller on the Osborne Connector.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Spall, Dr. Newman and members of the board. Um, tonight I want to give an update, um, on the Osborne Connector. Um, and so before I do that, I want to just give a, a brief history of, um, kind of where we got, or where we came from and to where we are now. Um, back in, uh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, Dr. Newman initiated conversations about adding the connector at Osborne High School. To provide another layer of safety for our students and staff as a transition between the main building and the Johnson Learning Center. On the school board, um, included that and budgeted three point two million dollars on our capital improvement plan. And then after, uh, recently, uh, this year, our final bids that we received. Um, including a tenancy allowance and a modification add-on for, uh, the construction. Uh, the approved budget is three million, thirty-two thousand. So that came in under our initial allocation, so we're, uh, happy about that. Uh, our architect is RRM M, and the general contractor is, uh, RJ Crowley. So I want to share, uh, just kind of a timeline, um, of, of, we got started, we, uh, you all approved. This, the board approved the, um, notice to proceed in April of twenty-twenty-five. Um, we gave the, um, contract mobilization began in May. And, um, you will see that if you are over to Osborne, that we have already begun construction. We began construction. Um, as soon as, uh, we gave the notice to proceed. Um, in November is when the product is, is to be substantially completed. And then with the final completion in December of twenty-twenty-five. Just to show you some, uh, currently, this is no longer there. Uh, this is what it looked like prior to, uh, the demolition. Uh, this is the covered walkway that connects the main building to the Johnson Learning Center. And this is what happened shortly after our notice to proceed. Um, the site work began, um, demolitioning the, uh, the covered walkway at the end of the school year. We had, um, some significant utility work that needs to be done with the parking lot. Um, and so there's, that has already been taken place. They've already began to pour the footers for the new foundation, for the new, uh, connector, the addition. And the final rendering is, this is what it will look like. Uh, it will match and blend in beautifully with the, uh, main building. And will connect, so for the first time, we will have a fully connected campus of the main building to the Johnson Learning Center. And just in closing, um, just want to say that this project, um, you know, reflects our longstanding commitment to student safety. Responsible budget management and campus improvement. And as I always get asked, this product is on time and is on budget. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Cufeller. Mrs. Stevens?
Quick question. Um, the project is scheduled to be complete in December twenty-twenty-five. If I recall correctly, there will be instructional spaces within that area. When will Osborne start using that space once construction is done?
Um, I wouldn't say they're instructional spaces per se. They're, they're more office-sized spaces. They're small conference rooms. Um, and if you look inside, you will see, um, they will be, uh, varying sizes. Uh, I think there are four of them, um, but they, in December, they will be fully functional and operational.
And then I did just want to say, I remember when the Johnson Learning Center was our alt-ed building. And I remember when it was our freshman academy. And I remember when, we didn't know what to do with it. So I, not just for safety sake, but for that conitu-, coni-, I don't even know what the word is right now. I'm so tired. Continuity, thank you. Connecting the two, I think, is a great idea. And it's going to provide a level of security we haven't always had when our students go back and forth between the buildings.
Agreed.
Anyone else?
Mrs. Bresch.
I would just like one correction. You said on time and on budget. It's technically on time and under.
Under budget, yes.
Anyone else?
Yep. Mrs. Spall?
I just want to say, this is a really big step for us. Um, a lot of us campaigned on safety for our students, you know. Um, I also remember when this building was built, when it wasn't built out on the second floor, when we didn't have a covered walkway. And, you know, it's, it's been unsafe for a long time, and this is a really, really big deal. And, you know, for us to have appropriated money in twenty-twenty-two, and it's finally happening, maybe by twenty-twenty-six. Um, is, it should be a point of pride for all of us. We've done a good thing here.
Mrs. Bresch.
I'd just like to correct Ms. Spall. It will happen by twenty-twenty-six. He just said on time.
December of twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah.
For dramatic purposes, that's twenty-twenty-six.
Anyone else?
All right, well, thank you very much. Um, you also have, uh, update for us on summer projects.
I do. So, good evening. I'm pleased to, um, provide an update on the twenty-twenty-five summer capital improvement and safety products that are taking place across the school division. These products reflect our ongoing commitment to providing a safe, modern and supportive learning environment for our students and staff. The work is being managed to minimize disruption and to maximize efficiency while our schools are on summer break. And so I want to share a few of the products that we are currently undertaking across the division. So specific projects, um, we have Osborne High School is our phase two of our roof replacement. Um, and if you drive by, you will see that, uh, taking place. Uh, this is a continuation of our multi-phase roof replacement project at Osborne High School. Uh, phase two addresses the ongoing, um, issue with our aging roof. Uh, to prevent for, uh, future maintenance issues and providing, uh, the integrity of our facility. At Metz, uh, Middle School, we have, uh, our, our multi-phase, uh, phase one of our restroom refresh. Uh, we beginning in the CTE wing. Um, we are updating the restrooms, um, in that, in the CTE wing. To ensure accessibility, cleanliness, and to modernize those for our students. At Hayden Elementary School, we have a hallway flooring replacement. Uh, the replace me, the replacing of the hallway flooring is going to be, um, with durable and easier to maintain materials that are curly there. Uh, we're also leveraging, uh, we have a security camera update that's happening, and that is leveraging grant funding. Uh, that we received from the Virginia Department of Education in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that we had to, uh, put a twenty-five percent match to, and so that is upgrading the cameras, um, at Hayden Elementary School. And then at Round, um, the, the window project, the window replacements were not a summer product. They were done in winter break. But they, we had to do some things with them with the roller shade installation. And so we said, we throw them on this and, and, and show that as an update. Um, and those new windows, um, provide with more energy efficient windows to improve insulation, uh, reduce utility costs and enhance our classroom. And so just some pictures that you see here. Uh, this is our roof replacement.
Can I ask if all of the front-facing, um, windows at Round, did everyone get window shades?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, the roller shades are on all of the windows. Um, this is our roof at the high school, and so you can see, uh, some before and after pictures that are happening. Our Metz Middle School bathrooms that we are, uh, looks very different today, um, as it was, than it was a week ago. But you can see the need for a refresh in that bathroom. Our Hayden Elementary School, the flooring, uh, we did, uh, over winter break last year, we did the cafeteria. And now we're continuation through, uh, due to some plot, supply issues went into the summer. And you can see the, the flooring there will now match in, when it's, when it's installed, will match the cafeteria. And the security cameras, uh, we've upgraded the security cameras there. Uh, we now have coverage in the outside area for the parking lot, which did not previously exist. Uh, so we're excited about that. And then Round, uh, just some pictures of our new windows. And also Round also got the same camera system that, um, is going to be, is installed at Hayden. And also the new sim- system that we did last summer at Weems Elementary School. And with that, um, just want to say a huge thank you to our maintenance and facilities team led by Mr. Helton. Um, they manage these projects, um, in addition to the other things that they do in just regular maintenance and, uh, and upkeep of our facilities. And so they've done a tremendous job, and, um, just thank you for the board for continuing to, um, support these projects. So that we can provide the best for our students and our staff.
Absolutely. Any questions or comments from the board?
Um, I just want to say, I'm so glad to see the window treatments. I know the teachers will be happy to see that when school starts, so, thank you.
We appreciate the progress, and please give our regards to Mr. Helton, and, uh, or we will next time we see him, and we're doing great things here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, rolling right along, we're down to school board member comments, and I'll go first to Ms. Miles.
Okay, so I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Um, I hope everyone had a great Fourth of July, um, holiday with their friends and family. Um, my heart and prayers go out to the families who've been affected by the loss of life in Texas during the flash floods. I can only imagine what these families are going through as they mourn the loss of their children and their family members. Summer is flying fast. Um, I know summer school actually ends this week. Can't believe that. Um, but I look forward to visiting the summer school showcase at Baldwin and Mayfield on Thursday morning. So I'm excited to, to meet some of the students and the teachers. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. Dr. Jones? Thank you, Ms. Miles, Dr. Jones?
School, we open this in about a month, so it's now time to start preparing for the upcoming school year, parents, I suggest you start to think about establishing routines, like earlier bedtimes, think about school supplies, review materials from the previous school year, and look at the curriculum for the upcoming year. Students, it's a perfect time to increase your reading, time to start to think about new goals for the grade level that you will be starting on August 12th, and set some goals for the upcoming year. The void voted to enter into partnership with Virginia Virtual Academy tonight, and this partnership will provide additional, will provide additional resources to our students and also serve other students in the state. So continue to enjoy your summer and take advantage of all activities available in our community.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. We'll go to Mrs. Brezha.
Thank you, not much to report, I look forward to attending the summer showcase with, I suspect, many of you. I did appreciate the opportunity to do my own separate walkthrough of summer school earlier, thank you for that opportunity. And the only thing I would like to observe is that summer break is 10 weeks long, and as of tomorrow, we are five weeks in, as Dr. Jones was saying, which means there's five weeks left, tomorrow is the exact halfway point of summer, so if there's a, if there's something you haven't done yet, a memory you haven't made, get that in, and I definitely recommend to start thinking, obviously seriously, about the school year, but we are halfway through, and it's incredible that we are already here.
Thank you, Mrs. Brezha. Ms. Brown?
Yes, thank you, good evening. I want to begin my comments by sending a big thank you to the teachers who committed to teaching our students during the summer months, I appreciate your continued dedication. I also want to take a moment to invite Osborne students to meet Mangala Muncha, Sandra Staqueria, Councilmember Ashley Hudson, Hudson, and I will be there on August 3rd from 2:00 to 4:00 to talk to you, so please RSVP by texting 571-364-4067. I also want to take a moment this evening to send my heartfelt condolences to the family of former Manassas City student Edwin Escobar. I'm so deeply sorry for your loss, there are no words that can ease this kind of pain, but please know that you are in my prayers, may your son's memory always be a blessing, and may you find moments of peace even in the pain. Quería tomar un momento para enviar mis más sinceras condolencias a la familia del ex estudiante de Manassas City, Edwin Escobar. Lamento profundamente su pérdida, no hay palabras que puedan aliviar este tipo de dolor, pero por favor sepan que están en mis oraciones, que la memoria de su hijo sea siempre una bendición y que encuentren momentos de paz incluso en el medio de este dolor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mrs. Stevens?
Recently, we were all asked to share a quote or a statement with Chair Seberg for the administrators retreat.
Leadership retreat.
The leadership retreat. And what I don't know what I want to say, but if some are rolling around in the back of my head, I'd like to go to Google. And I Googled inspirational quotes, blah, 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 blah. As I was looking through, looking for something to spur me on, I found a quote that resonated with me, and it didn't resonate with me in terms of the leadership team, it resonated with me in the, with our board up here on the dikes, because we are a team. And believe it or not, we are learning from each other every time we interact. And this quote is from a man named Peter Sengay, I need to just say who he is, he's a system scientist, and what he studies is thinking in secondary education, and he's the founder of something called the Society for Organizational Learning, and that's how we learn as parts of organizations. And so this, this quote really resounded with me, and I wanted to share it, and he says, "When teams are truly learning, not only are they producing extraordinary results, but the individual members are growing more rapidly than could have occurred otherwise." And I think this is going to be for us to think about, to take this opportunity to listen to each other and learn from each other, because we all come from very different backgrounds, we all have very different perspectives, and each perspective has value in and of itself, and if we want to learn and grow, not just as board members, but for the good of our school, let's listen to each other, let's grow together to build a stronger system.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens, and I appreciate that quote, and I'll be happy to share your quote with the leadership team later this month. And thank you to the rest of you that have shared your quotes, I appreciate them all, and I know some are coming, I hope. Vice Chair Spall?
I really don't have prepared comments for tonight, in the spirit of what Ms. Stevens just said, I want to thank our entire group for covering so many topics, you know, prayers for loss, excitement for a new school year, appreciation for staff and volunteers, you know, we've got five weeks left, everybody make the most of it, thanks.
And for my comments, I'd like to thank Ms. Sloan for your presentation and for answering all our questions so promptly, and for the other presentations that updated us, and for getting through all the policy work, or part of it anyway, discussion of it. And Manassas City Public Schools has had a very productive summer, and for those that are on break, I really, I really hope that you're enjoying every moment of relaxation, joy, and replenishment. Thank you, and good night.
We have a motion? Chair? Yes? Chair, I move the school board meeting adjourned. I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, seconded by Dr. Jones, that the school board meeting adjourned. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 7-0, we are adjourned, thank you.